Okay, welcome. I'd like to call the May 7th, 2024, a law city council meeting to order. And you would please call our call roll call.
Morgan.
Here.
Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Mike Anderson.
Here.
We do have a call.
Okay, let us stand and say, who do you believe is? Dr. Crowe, sir, would you leave us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. I never doubt, and I give it all with a belief.
Okay, is there any orders of business for emergencies?
None.
Okay, is there attendance on Zoom?
Katie is on Zoom.
Okay, and that brings us to item number six, the police report. Welcome, deputy.
Thank you. Good evening, those of you that don't know me, I'm Deputy Brian Austin. Been here for about four months now. Who's to say that April is, I mean, the key word quiet for us, and not much going on? Any questions for, for me?
I see that you did have 145 extra patrols. Can you tell us what an extra patrol is?
Yep, typically an extra patrol is anytime that law enforcement stops at any business, and we walk down Main Street or anything like that, that's typically what we call an extra patrol, is just making a public appearance at a place.
Okay, very good. Kind of out and about and communicating, right?
Yep.
Okay, are there any other questions for Deputy Austin tonight?
Good, two assaults again?
Yeah, can't speak much to that. I know one of them, it came in as an assault, but it was actually changed to just a disturbance, which means it could be verbal. And also that one I was just speaking of, it, it was just a disagreement in a couple.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Thank you. How can I address you too?
Okay, is there any one that needs to declare a conflict of interest tonight?
Item 14, I will abstain from.
Okay. Rick, were you then, do you need to declare any?
I'm not gonna declare that, but when that item comes up, I will abstain.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item eight is to approve the minutes of April 18th.
The move second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Okay, item number nine is the claims for the City of Wall, the Fire Department, and the Library. Does anyone have any questions on any of those claims this evening, or any of those items that have been listed? Hearing none. Is there a motion then to approve the claims for the City of Wall, the Fire Department, and the Library?
So.
Stan is moved.
Second.
And Jerry seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Okay, the next item then is...
Yeah, I thought we were going to have Tim here to kind of address this. And I saw him and Garrett over on Fourth Avenue looking down the hole, so I think there might be something going on that they're addressing first.
Okay, so they will probably be here shortly, and we can come back to that. Does anyone have a problem if we do that then, under their circumstances? Okay, that brings us to item 11 then. The different items to review at this time, which are the Fire Department minutes. And those are for the month of March, as well as April. And something that I will continue to bring forward to Pennington County Housing is that they have, they moved in March and they, in April, regarding their action, if there's an alarm at the Prairie Village. Then, following that is the on-call schedule and overtime, as well as the ambulance report, financial reports. Also included for your review was the water usage for the month and up to date through April. The sales tax report, as well as the B, B, B and B report. And Carolyn has revised the way that she will be sharing the cash and money market balances. Would you like to explain that at all, or does anyone have any questions, or do you? It's just a new format, is what she tried.
I felt that the last report I had was not really accurate numbers because of my transfers, when I take money from the money market to cover the checks that we write from the cash account. So I just didn't like the way it read, and I'm trying to get to something that is a little more easily understood and a little more true to numbers. So I'm trying this, also might change again when I'm totally implemented with the new software. There might be an actual report that they can give me that would be better understood by everybody, so. Look at it, see what your thoughts are. If you have comments, you'd like to see something different or something added, you know, let me know. But I'm just trying to make it a little more streamlined and easy to understand.
Okay, so review that as she's asked you to do, and then if you have any feedback, please share that with her. And then we also have the expense budget included, year-to-date, for the month and year-to-date. And then we also have two building permits for Waldrug. So, Rick, could you tell us where Buffalo Street is?
Well, does anybody know where Andy Eisenbrow's mobile phone used to be? It's kind of up. I, I mean, it's, and it's gone, Andy moved it, but there's a cement pad there, and so we're putting these two 20-foot containers side by side, right there. And, and you can't really see them from practically any place.
Back in behind those poles.
Yeah, and what, what we wanted the containers for is furniture storage, because they're like, okay, I think they're mouse-proof, waterproof, everything, they really seal up.
Okay.
And we can get a lot of furniture in two 20-feet, 20-foot containers.
Okay. All right, and so these were approved by Garrett, reviewed and approved. Okay, so is there any other questions on any of those items then, included in that review? Portion of our agenda. Okay, seeing none. We are going to move right into public comments. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council. They have three minutes for each person, and no action will be taken at this time. So is that our friend Tim? Okay. So is there anyone that would like to speak to the council tonight?
Yep.
Dar.
Hi, quick one. Evening. I did talk to, had a chance to talk to Rick, Mary, Mike, and Garrett, and Carolyn, a little about it. So out on Wall Lake Road, just touching base, the Wall Lake Road, if anybody is not familiar, it's the Echo Valley Development out there. Southern third of the road is insanely soft. Like trucks keep sinking, telehandler just driving down the road some three feet, and it was on the shoulder, but still sunk out of sight. Garrett and the city crew fixed it. But now the approach on the south end, anything other than a car you come up, it will pull you around, it's insanely soft. And then now, as we've been rolling along and getting moisture this year, if you were to drive out there, the ditches are full of asphalt chunks from the base layer that they ran. So like in, I don't know, probably a hundred-foot run, there's probably two skids to your bucket loads worth of four- to five-inch chunks of asphalt. So, I mean, obviously that makes a good base, but asphalt chunks tend to roll that stuff. As you build them bases, they roll, it's gonna just keep working itself out. It's gonna be a continued problem, I believe, for a while, but I would assume that's probably not on the lot owner's staff cleanup. So, but anyways, I want you guys to take a look at it, and also just address the timeline. Because the southern portion, the upper two-thirds, rock solid, great road, really firm. Last third is not good, and it needs to get addressed before you're out of warranty or you can't. You don't want to put that on the city's dime. So, it was an expense. So, I spoke to you guys, and I said I'd come forth and at least express my concerns with it. So, the only other thing I was questioning just was, why was the road not, you know, covered with limestone versus the O'Connell gravel? So, that's the only other question I had. I thought that was on the original bid, was limestone basis course, I believe, right?
Yeah, so I got to speak to that question. Tim Harvick with KJ Engineering. As far as the limestone, it's a good question. That would primarily be cost-related, just in the city's, I guess, kind of value engineering of the project. The red limestone gravel, like you see, is much more cost, I guess, prohibitive to come out rather than truck in versus the, you know, Connell gravel can still be the DOT base core spec, and is, is normally specked in an area like this just because of the cost, so.
What was specked in the, in the bid documents? Was the limestone specked in the documents, and that's how they bid it? And then was a change order done, or was the O'Connell stuff an acceptable substitution?
Correct. The O'Connell stuff was an original fact.
Did you guys get a chance to go out and roll, or were you there?
Jim, you know about there?
Yeah, so I, I did drive it, and I appreciate being here tonight and hearing some of the concerns as well. We certainly, I, I don't know that I'm standing here with all the answers tonight. It's, it's, it's good, good, like I said, to hear the concerns, and I think we just keep working through that and discussing through that. It is a little bit tricky, just like I say, standing here tonight off the cuff. We did obviously do our, our CA, ministry and project, and also did the material testing. You know, the contractor did meet all their density requirements and aggregate tests and things like that to support that. So, we'll just have to kind of work through that if there was any deficiencies we did with, with them to go back and fix our, our construction as well. But, but driving it, I, I, I do see on the south side where it looks like there's some running that started, been a wet spring, but we certainly want to follow up, and there's different questions that, you know, I can think of asking right away, maybe checking with Geotech and some of those folks just to start to flush out, you know, what the concerns might be and what options might be to shore it up a little better. So, like I said, I don't have all the options standing here tonight, but I certainly appreciate hearing it, and we can discuss through that, so.
So would there be an opportunity or a time that would work with your schedule where you could meet with our street committee and maybe Dar and John? Because John's addressed the, the concern also.
I, I think you guys can handle it. I don't think, like, from a public standpoint, we need to jump in on it.
Okay.
I just want, I promised that I would come and, you know, bring it up at least, so now it's out, so you guys can address it.
Okay, fantastic. So.
Yeah, let's do that. And then I'll just mention that here, there's a couple other things that I had mentioned to staff that I was kind of keeping an eye on. The grass in the ditches I see is, is coming, it's starting to come in now, but a little bit slow. We did seed in the fall, so that was an item that I was kind of keeping an eye on anyway. We just want to make sure we get good coverage. And there's a few, a few things like that that we were watching anyway, so I, I think it worked well to just kind of lump these discussions all together, so.
Okay, so Tim, while you're there, we went over the top of our item number 10 on the agenda, which, would you like to speak to the change order?
Yes, real quick, and I apologize, we were out on site finishing an item up, but we were tardy. So yes, that change order for the Fourth Avenue project tonight was for an unexpected service line that we came across. It's actually coming out of the Golden West Building. We expected, kind of, I'm sure, acting off of old record drawings, the service line coming out of the building to be standard PVC sewer piping. As the contractor got it all exposed, it was not, it was actually old concrete pipe. And with that, you know, it, it's there, it's been performing and would probably continue, however, certainly not a standard to put a brand-new shiny concrete road over. So, we understand there was a cost associated with that, but did recommend and worked with the staff to, to bring that forward tonight, just to get that upgraded as well while the road was opened up, so.
Any questions on that?
Jim, what's the new material?
PVC.
PVC, yeah.
Standard sewer PVC pipe.
Thank you.
Okay, so would I have a motion to approve this change order for $6,000?
The vote.
Stan, was that Stan moved?
Second.
Jerry seconded. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All same side? Motion carries. All right. Was there anything else you wanted to share with us, Tim, on?
That's all, I'll be back in a couple weeks, though.
Okay.
And we'll meet before then.
Okay, that sounds great then. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to item 13. We have some permits in front of us. Built residential billing permit. This comes to us again from Pulis Construction. This is for the governor's home that will go in on the lot, last lot that's available, lot one, block one of Hanson subdivision. Do I have a motion, or is there any questions about that?
Okay, so this is the last one. How, how many homes have been put in, in the Hanson addition?
There's, there are seven lots, and there is five in place. One more, the governor's home on its way, and then there's one lot that's been spot, foreign reserved. So.
Wow.
All seven are gone.
Very successful development. That's awesome.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, so Jerry has moved to approve the governor's home by Pulis Construction. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike has seconded. Any other questions?
Is, is it already solved, or?
Yes, I understand it has, as long as they can get it here and get it on its foundation, I understand it's solved. Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next permit is actually an extension for a permit that was requested and was going to be completed in September, but life happens and wasn't able to get this completed on time, so he's asking for an extension. And that is for a constructor wood fence.
We need a motion for it?
Yes, please, because we're extending the time.
So.
Okay, Stan has moved.
A time of extension. So basically, when they apply for the permit, they have a year, even though they might put on the permit that they plan to finish in six months or whatever. And I did look up the date that he had put on the original application, and it was in May, so we're gonna do a six-month, two-month, I mean.
Six months.
Okay.
I assume that'd be adequate one.
Right?
Maybe six months from, from today.
Okay, so Stan has moved to extend the residential building permit for, to construct a wood fence by six months. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Rick has seconded?
Yes.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to extend it six months. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and the next item is actually conditional use permit. It is a renewal. There's been no complaints at that business, and so this is just a conditional use renewal. Is there, do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
Bernannus Mercantile.
To move.
Okay, Dan has moved.
Second.
Mike seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, that brings us now to item number 14, and we have some folks from Dakota Mill here that would like to visit with us. Would you introduce yourself, please, Josh?
Yes, my name is Josh Weekly. I am the Western Operations Manager here for Dakota Mill and Green. We've got a couple points that we'd like to talk about. One, what we've got on here is the street closure. We've got it over on Main Street. We're, we're gonna have to bring down one of our grain bins for repair. And to do so, we're gonna need to completely close that street for, a complete closure for about six days, around May 20th through May 23rd. Because we're gonna have to have a crane in to bring all this stuff down. And then, again, we'd like to probably close the entire street for June 3rd through the 6th, to put everything back up. In between those dates, probably between the 17th and June 15th, if we could get one of those lanes closed, that would be great for construction purposes, so we can keep people. We have to, we have to put a new roof on one of our bins, so we have to bring the, jack the entire bin down, disassemble it, put a new bin roof on it, take it back up.
So you'll be using like a huge crane?
Yes, ma'am. We will have a crane sitting there for, for those May 20th through the 23rd and June 6th, or 3rd through the 6th, there'll be a crane sitting there. Other than that, we'll probably just have equipment as far as telehandler and bin pieces would be a good spot to, if we can close off one lane there, at least to help keep things organized.
So what are you gonna do with truck traffic then?
Our truck traffic, we won't have any truck traffic, we will be closed down. There will not be any elevator truck traffic at all.
The whole elevator's closing?
The economy part won't be closed, but
The grain.
The grains, I guess, ma'am, we will not be able to accept grain for that month, that time.
Okay.
Jerry's thrilled.
Okay, any other?
It shouldn't interfere with the Hanson motel or anything.
No, I, I, we could actually close it north of their, their, their law, or their, that line there would be sufficient, that it could be open.
And, and so it'll be ready to go by harvest time?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. Oh, well, that's awesome.
And it will not interfere with traffic for Hanson's?
Nope.
And you'll break the news to the truckers that they're
We already have.
I'll go for you.
Well, you're still here. Never run me off and all that. Most of them all accept that they understand it's gotta be part of it.
Gotta be done.
That two-day closure for our South driveway ended up four weeks, and they all sort of fired everything in the doubles.
Okay.
With that, ma'am, I guess, sorry you don't mind me. Are you guys looking at closing Main Street north of Fourth Ave?
So this is Main, would actually be more of an
Okay. Awesome. I just want to make sure we're not directing Fourth Avenue traffic in there and closing up inside.
No, you should be good.
Yep.
Okay, so with that, what, how does the council feel? Are you, can we give the Dakota Mill approval to close that portion of the street?
Move to approve.
Okay, so Rick, Rick has moved, Dan has seconded. Any other questions?
You guys will have your, all your own columns or, you know.
Traffic control?
I have none. Don't look at me.
We were just asking.
I do not get it.
Do you have something to rent or borrow here?
We can borrow, yeah.
What have we got?
If we need to, that's okay.
We're good.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then you'd like to visit with us about another topic?
The other one is, so it's up on First Avenue, which is the furthest up by the park. We're, we're putting our infertilizer containment system up on that north end there. You've probably seen our permits, and we're, we're building that up. We just want to make sure that we're not gonna get First Avenue access closed off to us, so we can always get in and out. And the other one would be the, knowing that First Avenue and then that Creighton Road, the approach, we're gonna, we'll look at that and see if that's wide enough to bring doubles in and doubles out. If not, we'll extend, or we'll talk with Garrett or you guys, but yeah, we'd be happy to pay to widen that approach if needed. Because that'll be how our fertilizer trucks will be going, liquid trucks will be going in and out, would be through First Avenue and Creighton Road.
So, what is the road material like on that first? And you're talking between the park and the old football field?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the street you're talking about, and what kind of material is that road presently?
More like both, building, buildings.
Okay. But by doing this, would this eliminate any traffic on Second Avenue, which is a residential area, or at least slow it down substantially?
Should slow it down.
It did honestly speed up during our fertilizer season, and you guys have been, Main Street closed up at the elevator. The only way they really had to get in was Second Avenue. What he is asking is to widen the approach to First Avenue, and we would be able to come in and out that way.
We, we had talked about that at one time, you know, when they first talked about putting in a different scale and stuff, improving that corner there so they could come in that way. So, we had something to discuss in the past.
So if it did take any, you're talking of approach, making the approach wider, and you're willing to help us with the expense of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because you know a construction company that would be available?
Yes, ma'am.
Just happen to have one of those. Okay, well, that's him, because they're hard to get.
So is there an apron on the, because I thought that the material was different.
There's, about that approach.
There's gravel on top of the buildings. I mean, those is stuff's been dumped on there all of the years, it runs off. But yeah, no, I would agree, that is a very narrow direction, very steep, there's been a lot on the north side. Well, I just was wondering about the turning. It's gonna be a lot of, whether you're coming in or going out.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're taking a look at it, I'm sure we can figure something out.
Then we will, we will have to replace that. There's a culvert on that west end.
Got it.
Where the drains are. There, we'll have to replace that. I know this is a hole there. Water isn't really flowing, so.
So another thing I might ask is how might that affect our park or our swimming pool? Is there a chance, if it dries up, that there could be dust or that those trucks would cause, is there anything? How close to the pool in the park is, will this, do you think this will be when, as you are trying to get to your facility?
Well, I guess I'd like Garrett to answer, but I mean, the city
Well, I guess I'd like Garrett to answer, but I mean, the city has their gravel storage right next to the pool. And we have, we've had that gravel before. I guess no, no complaint on the west side that I'm aware of, is there Garrett?
No, no. You could probably mag it if. If you did too. But I really, yeah, I mean, you, it's packed down good in there. I think the road going in, I mean, will need some work too. I don't think we've got to put gravel on it, so wouldn't cause too much dust. But, you know, once they get over, I can't remember how the tanks are, but, I mean, that's always been. Actually, the corn husks from the field are the worst thing over there.
So how soon are you going to be starting this? Probably have to build your facility first or?
Yes ma'am, they've, they've started on the, uh, their work and it's about complete. Um, I believe they're going to be here at the end of the month to put in the containment. Um, so then we'll have to move the tanks, so it'll probably be a couple of months. It won't be this season, so it would be next, next season before we would, before it would be up and running.
Okay, so would that give our street community then an opportunity to take a look at that? Work with Garrett then please and just, you know, make sure that. I don't think you're asking us for a yes or no tonight, but you're ma- making us aware of it? And we can look into it and come back with a recommendation from the street committee? Okay, so and work with.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we'd have to talk to the county about who. I'll put it for that, but I'll look into that.
Okay. Garrett knows how to get a hold of you.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll ask the county about that. I think it's just a simple corner, some, at least some dryness.
Okay, so.
Clearly there is a culvert that runs across that way too, isn't there? Kind of diagonally that runs across. It's got a, got a hole in it, I can see that from where we were just talking about, we need to get that.
The north to south, the one on the west side that run, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's one they're gonna replace.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, thank you then.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll be looking for, for a recommendation from the street committee then. Okay, that brings us to, um, item number fifteen. And we're just looking for a concern form update. Uh, one of the concerns we had were, uh, from Creighton Road. And that gentleman did get back here and then it continued to rain. So he again was not able to move forward on the project of trying to remove the branches, the concrete in the woods. So he, but it's on his agenda and he'll do that as soon as it's dry. And then, uh, we had the stone drive, uh, concern. Mike?
Yeah, and I, I've visited with him and actually I, I was out there today. I got the keys from Garrett and went out there. Apparently there was a truck that was stuck out there, uh, but they're now out. And it, it doesn't look too bad, so I'm getting touchy and finishing up.
Okay, sounds great.
Um, is, the, the only, I do, there's more tin coming off. Um, and I guess.
On its own, you mean?
Yes, now on the west side.
Oh.
And it's really coming off on the west side, which there's that road there. And I kinda visited with Garrett just a little bit, so I'm gonna kinda talk to him, because I, something, if that comes off of there, that's, uh, a real safety thing. So, um, I'm just gonna tell him, you know, uh, something's gonna have to be done, you know, as far as waiting on the contractor or whatever he's got going on there, something's gotta be done. Because now it's flapped off the side of the house and banging. So, and it's already sheared in half, so there's not much more to come off.
So I think I know when you weren't sleeping last night. Okay, alright.
So I'll, I'll visit with him, um, when I get the rest of that picked up and try to go from there.
Well, okay, well, thank you for your efforts. And do we have an update on Glen Street then?
Glen Street.
Glen Street.
The bush.
The bush.
Well, I see they trimmed it.
Okay.
Has it, Garrett, has it been painted yet?
No, not yet, no, we haven't had a chance yet.
And, and then we're, there're gonna be some lines put in?
Yeah.
Garrett.
Okay, so, um, thinking about that, I, the lines and the curb definitely address getting mail delivered. But our, the concern that was brought forward was being able to walk through there. Do you think we're going to get that accomplished or? Because that's actually what our concern was.
I think that, that, uh, it'd be maybe nice to have the owners come before the council, but I think that might be complicated and there will be some resistance. Mike, you were at that meeting?
Yeah, um, is there gonna be a crosswalk there, Garrett, so people?
There's a crosswalk.
Further to the meeting.
Further to the stuff.
Yeah, just to, yeah.
So we're. Not going to, well, I guess we need to, this is like the third time this has come, third year actually, that this has been brought forward. So I was just trying to understand if we were gonna actually address the issue, which is safety? And if that would be.
Well, we're addressing a certain part of the safety issue. Uh, the bush being trimmed back to the yellow curb and the lines, uh, keeps cars from parking there and people from walking around the cars. And then, and then the other issue, ha- having, forcing them to put, if that would be the correct terminology, put a sidewalk through there, and that bush has been there forever. And this has gone on a lot longer than three years. Uh, there was a sign location there, so. I mean, I'm not gonna speak for them, but I, I don't think we have a sidewalk going through there.
Couldn't put a crosswalk there, wouldn't that be safer? And up by the corner, and I mean, put a crosswalk, sign there. I mean, because, you know, it does a twenty mile an hour speed limit right there and we really need to give them slowed down.
That's a good idea.
Anyway, it would be another, I'm gonna say half block or block in. Say right at, right at the bushes, put a crosswalk over to, uh. I'm not sure there's.
Come a lodge?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
I don't know if that'd work, I'm not sure there's a, a sidewalk on that side.
It's asphalt.
Asphalt, is it?
Go right into their parking lot.
Did the committee at all review the sidewalk ordinances? Do we have anything in our ordinances that address having a, a sidewalk? When you've got one.
I never we have done this. There's a lot of sidewalk in this town. It's, in fact, we've let some people take out their sidewalk in.
We only did that one time.
Yes, and that was, no, we learned.
Uh, yeah, and you're exactly right. And I think that's been brought to our attention, that there are other issues. And there, uh, people have come to me and want to, um, there was a sidewalk committee, reestablish that, identify those, put them on a scale one to ten, and work where those issues are. But I think this is a ten, because no place where those other sidewalks, which I asked for pictures, uh, the pictures that were shown to people, to my knowledge, none of those put a walking pedestrian, tourist or local, into a street that brings in seventy-five percent of the traffic, according what Rick's data shows. And secondly, uh, it has been repeatedly indicated to us that it, that traffic's traveling like forty miles an hour when it comes in. I, and certainly we've tried, we've done our part in trying to get that to slow down, but I am very concerned about the liability for the city. If we have ordinances in place that address this, and, um, I'm not understanding the resistance, so.
Well, and I, when we did meet, a concern that I have almost probably more than that one is directly to the east of the powerhouse where the, uh, jackalope sits.
Mm-hmm.
That, there's no sidewalk right there, and those people park along that roadway. I mean, our locals even do, kids that are working out, things like that, but people walk there all the time. There's no sidewalk there, and then you walk through the rocks and right through the sign to get to the red rocks. Well, I don't see many people doing that, they walk to the left of the cars to, to come back around. So I think that, that that problem even goes further north, and that was just one that I thought of. But, I mean, some of those tourists just go out into the road to back up to take pictures of the, the jackalope.
Yeah.
And, you know, we know how people stop at that four-way stop, where the kids walking across the road to go work out, you know, so. I think there's a number of, number of concerns and.
I, 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 I think we should forge ahead, get, get the curb yellow, put the lines in. I, I mean, that will help the, the situation. Like you said, Mike, there's a lot of sidewalk issues and I, I think in this case, I, I don't just think there's an easy, uh, real easy solution, especially, they're kinda resistant. They like their bush, they think it's aesthetically pleasing, and they have a sign location there. And the, is, Mike, was the post still in there?
Yeah, I think it.
For the base cast, isn't it like a cast base or something?
So that would. And that's kinda directly right in the middle of where if there was a sidewalk, it would be, huh?
Hmm, it depends on how big the sidewalk was or if you put it right along the curb. I mean, it's a good. Three feet in and four feet in maybe.
So there is room for a three-foot?
I would, wouldn't. Safe for a hundred percent, but.
And then still have bush and still cover the light fixture or the electricity, whatever. So, um. So we just are not gonna act on this or we're gonna just wait and, and bring it back and see if? Uh, you talked about baby steps before and.
Well, I, I think we should do what we got permission to do. And, um. And then, then it's up to the council to, you know, to decide what they wanna do. But, but, but there are other sidewalk issues in, in town, you know, quite a few. This, this is concerning, but it's, I, I think it's been that way for a long time. I mean.
Well, and I think if we, if we give this a try, see how it works. If it doesn't work, then we have that to go back to them, you know, come in front of the council and have that discussion.
Okay.
But I, I think if we, if we proceed with kind of the plan that, that we got, um, you know, if it doesn't work, then we gotta take the next step.
So like somebody getting hit would be an indication it didn't work so well?
Well, th- there's places like that, all, all, you know, many places like that, that in town. And hopefully that would never happen.
Well, I agree with that, but.
I, I mean, that's not the only place.
Right. But you, but then, like I said, then these people that have come to me, wanna be on sidewalk committee, let them put that together and address, make a list of these places that we need to work on?
Sure.
Okay, alright. I guess that's what we have for that today, so, okay, moving on then, uh. We have, uh, opportunity tonight to, for our new council members to, uh, take oaths. And we have three of those, and I think Carolyn has got some oaths, uh, ready. And the way I would like to do that, this, this time, I'd like, uh, those of you that have been elected, which are Mike and Dan and Zach, if you would come over. I'm gonna step to the side and I'm gonna let Carolyn, uh, provide you with some old, uh, documents. Chair is not.
So I will give these to you and then, um, you would just put your name on the line and then when you get done and sit back down, get a sign for me, passing that to me, but, um, each one. And who's gonna read it?
Hey, you want us to read them, Carolyn?
Yeah, we can start with your board one.
Okay. Ready?
We're ready.
I'm Michael Anderson, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of South Dakota, the ordinances of the City of Wall, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman in Ward One for the City of Wall, pending accounting to the best of my ability.
I, Dan Locke, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, the ordinance is of the City of Wall, and will, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of alderman in Ward Three for the City of Wall, pending accounting to the best of my ability.
I, Zach Hoffman, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, the ordinance of the City of Wall, and I will faithfully discharge, discharge the duties of alderman in Ward Two for the City of Wall, pending county to the best of my ability.
Did you want to assist times that you had with the council and get some full council picture?
And so if everyone could, um, join us, let's take a new picture for the website now with our, uh, newly installed council members.
Go on the web, for the website. I got several.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Do you have an address, anything was after taking the oath party? Do you have a chance to say something on behalf of accepting those?
Would you like to?
I would.
Okay.
My name's Zach Hoffman, and I'm very honored to be elected alderman of Ward Two. First, I would like to thank my mom, my dad and my wife for their years of love and support through my life. I would not be where I am today if it wasn't for them. I would, um, I want to give a shout out to all the members of Ward Two. Thank you for listening to what I had to say and for your input on what would make the city better. And most of all, thank you for voting. From going door to door, I had quite a bit of input on what the city could do to improve safeties and lives of our citizens. I plan on sp- spreading those out throughout our meetings here. I will keep my promise of talking to everyone in Ward Two on how they want me to vote on major agenda items and how to improve wall, because that is my job as alderman, to talk to the people of my ward and use my vote based on the judgment and consideration of my ward. Lastly, I would like to thank everyone from the whole community that has encouraged me through this race, has been, and has congratulated me on the election. I'm truly honored to take on this role and to build a better wall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very nice. Okay, moving on then, uh, we have Dr. Crowzer with the superintendent report.
Yeah, this will be easy for ya.
Yeah, this will be easy for you. Um, as I explained, school in May, I told you a little bit earlier. Parties are wonderful to have. This year has been a great party, but it's time to go home. And, um, we're getting closer. Graduation is May eighteenth. I invite everybody to graduation. Baccalaureate is at twelve o'clock. Uh, several of, it's really been fun to have our students give so much input. I am all about the kids, and so, um, I think they've invited four, maybe five churches that they want to participate in their baccalaureate because those, that's what the kids are involved with. Um, and then graduation, of course, is going to be at one thirty. Um, a few things we've done, we helped clean up. I think we got our cleanup done before you guys did, and I think we beat the rain. Um, it did not take us as long as we had thought. Perhaps we'll do a little more next year. We'll see how that works. Uh, we paired little and bigs kids, and it was very, very successful. Um, gave those bigger kids some responsibility. Final week of school is gonna look, look a little different this year compared to what it has in the past. I am very, very, very much a component of strong academics. We are gonna have a final exam week. Um, so I don't believe in leaning out to the end. We will go strong to the end. The last day of school is the twenty-third. Yes, it's like Thursday, the twenty-third. We will release kids at two o'clock, and then we have our final day with teachers on Friday. I do also invite you to awards night on May fourteenth. Um, we have thirty percent of our senior class getting Bill Dakota scholarships, and so they are going to do, we are going to do a special signing for those kids at five o'clock, and then supper and awards will follow that. Um, track and golf are going hard, as a lot of you read the newspapers and such. We took twenty-four students to the School of Mind yesterday for math contests. Um, I'm just going to say fifteen of the twenty-four um, placed in the top ten, and in many of their categories, there were at least sixty kids in each category, so top ten out of sixty. Our kids did quite well. That excites me because some of our state assessment stuff doesn't show that, and I'd rather see our kids doing well here than some of that. I, I'm a believer in state assessments, but that's only one snapshot. Um, any questions? CTE progress? Nothing more than what's happened in the past. We have a meeting tomorrow night. Tomorrow is our board meeting. Tomorrow's our big day. Um, so we will have, um, we'll get updated on what's gonna happen. We're waiting for walls. We've got a really strong teacher hired. Um, welding and structures, and so he is coming. We have applied for grants. We are trying to fill that complex with some really good industry equipment. Questions?
How many more positions do you need to build?
Another thing, yeah, I, um, music teacher, and I've got one applicant for a music teacher, and that's one that I'm good at. I'm in the business of making teachers, and it seems like that's what we have to do these days because they are not growing on trees. Um, we also need a science teacher. We are losing a very, very, very good science teacher. Um, he likes it here. He's had a great experience, but family reasons are taking him elsewhere. So, um, we have had nobody apply for that one. Those are your talents. Um, we do have an option. We, when we felt that we needed to do something, we called Northern uh, University has their online program, which are decent classes, but it's not as good as face-to-face. They had just enough spots to save for us in case we need it. We are still hunting teachers. If you know of somebody who loves their science, I can make a teacher out of them. But they need to have a degree of some kind. Some of the best science teachers come out of mining and industry and things, so there's a teacher heart there. Send them my way. Good question, though. I work hard to get the best people on the bus, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the city's support. That's one thing our school could not be who they are or what they are without your support, and so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Christer. All right, chamber report?
I don't know. I guess if Katie's gonna speak or not, she just had the community center report that she, uh, shared in your packet, so if you have any questions, you could address them. Otherwise.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the community report? It's been very busy. That's for darn sure, and there's some neat things coming in when you take a look at that. Uh, SDSU Beef, South Dakota is gonna be here. Photography is coming back. Um, they seem to like our community in the summertime, so we're looking for some, uh, great things. All right, we are now, uh, on item number nineteen, and because this is the first meeting, uh, after the annual election, uh, it's, we need to approve First Interstate Bank and Black Hills Credit Union as our official depositories. Do I have a motion to approve?
Hold on a moment.
Okay. Jerry moved and Stan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Okay, we need to approve Pennington County Current as official newspaper. Do I have a motion to approve?
Coming motion.
Zach has moved.
Okay.
And Dan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. I need a motion to designate the mayor to sign all official documents on behalf of the City of Wall.
So.
Stan has moved.
Second.
Rick has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we need to appoint the mayor, uh, as emergency preparedness director. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, wait, we have to unvote this. We're rushing right along here.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Rick has moved to appoint the mayor as pre- emergency director. Mike seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Okay, we next need to establish a chain of command and location of Emergency Command Center, which is the Public Works Building is the Emergency Command Center. Chain of command during an emergency is mayor, fire chief, assistant fire chief, council president, council vice president, public works director, finance officer. Do I have a motion to establish the chain of command?
So moved.
Jerry moved and Stan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Okay, uh, the next thing is by ordinance, the first meeting, uh, after an election, we need to elect a council president, so motion, our nominations for president are open.
I would nominate Rick if he would accept.
I will accept.
Okay, Mike Anderson has nominated com- um, Rick for council president. Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry has seconded. Is there any other nominations? All those in favor of Rick as council president, say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to an election for vice president. Do I have a nomination for a vice president?
I would like to nominate Stan Anderson as a vice president of the city council.
Okay.
And I'd like to nominate Jerry Morgan.
Okay, so Stan Anderson has been nominated as well as Jerry. Is there any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Stan, um, raise your right hand.
I, I would actually, um, if Jerry wants to be vice president, that would, would problem.
Seriously, Stan?
Well, I've been vice president for a long time, but if Jerry's up to doing it, that's fine with me.
Jerry, would you accept that then?
I would.
Okay. Okay, so I see no need for an election then, if we've made that agreement. So all those in favor.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor, Jerry, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries then. So, uh, Rick is our council president and Jerry is our vice president. Thank you for your service and your willingness to do that. Okay, that brings us to item number, uh, twenty-six, and that's the, um, committee reports. And because there was a need for a change, I did not change much for the committees, but this is what I, um, think I have enough there for Carol and, oh, may I keep one?
Mary, do you have one more? We're gonna keep, you gotta rest down.
Thank God we didn't buy a plaque for that.
I know, I had to double check that, and I'm sure, it is, it's good.
I should know that of anybody. I should know that. Okay, so we will edit Zach, okay, um, on that list. Um, but under Parks and Recreation, I have Stan and Zach. Uh, Essential Services, Rick and Stan, uh, stay there. Planning and Zoning is still Dan and Rick. Economic Development Board, I've asked Jerry Morgan and Zach, asking them to get, participate with that. Emergency Services are Dan Hawk and Mike Anderson, and then Community Services and Hospitality is Jerry Morgan and Mike Anderson. Um, and Mike, because you're on that, uh, committee, I removed the one at the bottom that we had there before that had something to do with, um, maintenance for the community center. I took that off that Emergency Services, and that will fit under Community Services and Hosp- Hospitality now, since you're there. Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, so, uh, Carolyn, you've got a copy of this. I can provide it electronically for you, and you can post that on the website then, in the near future. Is there any questions or concerns about that?
Well, there's no real drastic changes.
No drastic changes, no. Okay, and the reason twenty-ten is by cemetery is because that's when that group or that committee was established. I had to ask about that myself, so.
Which one?
Well, down here at the cemetery, under Planning and Zoning Cemetery, twenty-ten, that's when that was established, so. Okay, that moves us then to approve the volunteer list for the fire department, and that was submitted by the fire department. So would I have a motion to approve the volunteer list that's been provided us?
So moved.
Zach has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right.
Might ask a quick question before we go further. My agenda is showing a complaint at this time, but I can't open it up.
What was that funny, that PDF one?
Yeah, I carried after the fire.
That will be addressed a little bit later, I think.
Well, can't open it anyway.
Okay, well, since it wasn't submitted on time, that's why it's.
Sorry, I.
Nope, it's, I have it, but it's further down the line.
So can anybody open it?
Again.
Okay.
No, I can't.
Okay, so.
I was able to print it out.
I used to print them out and then scan it in, and then I found the option to scan PDF rather than print it. So I thought I'd try that, but I guess I won't do that from now on. Didn't know that was gonna happen. Sorry about that.
Okay.
And, um, with the, uh, volunteer list of fire department, it's that, or you have more than previous years, or you about the same?
Um, about the same.
About the same.
Yeah, but only when four, five people show up.
Yeah.
Okay, item twenty-eight is approval of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five package on sale, off sale malt beverage and farm wine.
So moved.
Okay.
I am gonna need to, it's setting to twenty-eight.
Okay, Rick has abstained from item number twenty-eight. Um, okay, so who, Jerry, you moved? And Stan, okay, so Jerry's moved, Stan has seconded. Rick has abstained. All those in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that moves us to item twenty-nine. That is for the package on sale, off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine.
And I need to abstain from this one.
Okay. Zach is abstaining. Do I have a motion to approve the list? Which I should have mentioned before, that was, uh, the malt beverage was Wal Drug Store, Wal Drug Backyard, and Wal Auto Livery. This one is Moil Petroleum, Sleepy Hollow, Badlands Saloon, Badlands and Company, Omni, Badlands Frontier, BJ's, uh, Country Stores, Staywall, and Hanson Inn. All those in favor, do they get a motion here?
Move to approve.
Okay, Dan has moved and Stan has seconded, and Zach, okay, is abstaining. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post, motion carries. Item thirty is a, uh, special event malt beverage license for Wal Celebration Rodeo. Would I have a motion to approve that to sell beer at the throw rodeo?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Jerry has moved.
Second.
And Mike has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Right.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, then, uh, a special event liquor license is for the celebration committee as well as a noise permit, and they have requested that the fee to be, uh, fee be waived.
I feel I need to abstain from this as well because I'm on the committee.
Okay, Zach is abstaining.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Dan has moved.
Second.
And Rick has seconded, and this is, includes waiving the fee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Then we have a beer liquor gar- garden permit, uh, for Badlands Saloon and Grill. And that is, is that their back deck? Is that where that's located at? Okay, and that's year-round? Okay.
To approve.
Stan has moved.
Second.
And Dan has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, then, item number thirty-three. Uh, noise, uh, permits for Wal Drug, Badlands Saloon and Grill, and Staywall LLC.
I'm a, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, Rick is abstaining, and Zach is abstaining. Uh, I would like to ask, is there a time limit for those noise permits? Or what, how does those work?
They are until two o'clock.
Okay, so they can, they can be noisy every night of the week until two o'clock?
Well.
Not so much?
No, not every.
Just ask it.
Well, like, for, for Wal Drug, is it, ours is music for the backyard?
During the day, right?
Well, I mean, it might go to the back, or depending on whether we shut that down, but it's not super loud. It's music.
No, it's enjoyable, that. I like to sit back there. Okay?
And this is something that probably needs to, the ordinance of this needs to look, be looked at, you know, when we redo the ordinances, which is on my list of to-dos, but and you all will be, it'll be brought to y'all when we work on that, but I'm kind of going through it and making some notes about it for you guys to have discussion about, you know, so.
Do you give individual noise permits? Just wondering in case my neighbor would think my garage music is too loud.
Only if it's bad music. Make a sign that says, you know, welcome to my backyard where the neighbors listen to good music, whether they like it or not.
Okay, so did we, we know who's abstaining. Did anyone make a motion to approve these noise permits? Yeah. Okay, Mike has moved.
Second.
And Jerry has seconded, and Rick and Zach are abstaining. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number thirty-four. Well, Finance Officer report.
Carolyn. Well, as most of you who receive water from the city would probably notice that you got a new utility that looks different. Um, so I was able to run this last filling cycle through our new software. I will continue to do tweaks on it, um, learning how to accept the payments and all that kind of thing into the new system, so. I've talked to a lot of customers, um, that do the online portion. There were some glitches in that, and, um, I will be talking with them tomorrow to get some further training and to try to work through some of those glitches, but that's kind of just what happens when you have new software, I believe. So asking for everybody's patience on that, and, um, then after the utility, we'll be working through the fund accounting, payroll and all that. Hopefully, by the end of the summer, I'll have everything up and going. It just takes time to get everything in. And then, um, just wanted to give an update on the SHRM conference that I attended last week. It was really interesting. Um, there were people that had like over four hundred employees that they were, that were attending, down to me that have seven employees. But there were a lot of things that kind of just fit every, you know, mold that there was. So I was really happy to attend and picked up some things that I think will help me, and so I appreciated the opportunity to go to that. And that's really about all that I think I have.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, Public Works, what would you talk, you have a lot to talk about.
Well, Sunday morning, we got a little surprise. I got a phone call and text messages from about five people saying they lost water pressure, and then Dan called, I think that was you, right? Said I have a water leak, and I turned the corner to go to the shop, and there's a river running down by by the tow mill, and we, I got the valve shut off right away and talked to the people, and I think I text everyone, and we started working on it, and found out that a piece of pipe had split about twelve feet. So we, uh, got it all dug up and exposed on Sunday, and then Monday morning I went and got the parks, and we got it all put back together and got water flowing again, so. We, and some of the houses that were out, you know, overnight, we backfed them from, from other houses, so they had water to to shower and dishes or whatever, and then we took them, took them a case of bottled water, so they, just in case they didn't want to, you know, drink the water. I wouldn't drink water through the hoses either, but, so, yeah, I think it went pretty good.
And I'll just comment, at this time, I did get a phone call of someone who lives in that area and was very appreciative of how Public Works had handled it and took care of them and really kept the time of being out of water to a Roman model, so.
Went above and beyond.
Yep.
So truly, Gary, you did a great job.
Thank you. And then, yeah, we got that done, and then, of course, Fourth Avenue is coming along pretty good. We're starting, I mean, they got the road nice in there now, and all of the underground work is done, all the water and sewer, uh, they're putting in the storm drain now. Uh, we found an issue with the sewer, uh, just today, that they had two services, and we, one was at four foot and one was at eight foot or seven foot. So their house was working because they had an addition, but their basement wasn't, so. So it'll be a little extra cost on us to fix that. It was just, it was a mistake by the engineering and us. We didn't know it was all there, but, but the homeowner's been pretty pretty, uh, appreciative and really laid back and waiting for it, and so, and I told him today we need to get something done, so. And luckily, the owner of Holstein was here today, so we kind of got the ball. He was over there today, so, um, other than that, you know, doing a little mowing, and before long, we'll be painting in the pool and the parks and everything else.
How about well number one? How's that going?
Uh, not good. We got the new fan in there, got it all running. Uh, the pump wouldn't work. So, or it worked, but we didn't get any water, so I called, uh, John Kramer, he works for West River Lightning Jones, and we switched two of the wires around, and it started working because of the phase was reversed, so if it's not pumping, it was going the other direction. And so then, of course, it's been off for a while, so we were letting, we were letting it drain and, and flush, and I opened up the room to where the VFD was, and it was full of smoke, so I don't know what's wrong. There's a, I can't remember what it's called, but it was really, really hot, and I know there's oil inside of it, so that might have went bad. So, yeah. So I'm gonna have a lot of good luck.
Garrett, quick question. The pipe with the eight-foot crack, or where, where was that pipe at?
The water pipe.
Material? No, where was that location?
Oh, sorry, it's in front of Ken's, in between, uh, ambulance, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we're lucky it was only a couple houses that were.
I got a phone call that day that they, they thought it was coming out of the ambulance shed, so I went and ran up there and checked, and you were already on it, so.
Yeah, you could have probably put a kayak up the.
We were just getting home from here, and then I pulled in the back, and my daughter pulled up front, she said, we've got a river out there.
But actually with, oh, go ahead.
Was it eight inch?
Uh, six inch.
Six inch.
Yep, and actually with, kind of, two rookies, it went, you know, pretty good the first time, and luckily, you know, we had little time to, you know, do it really quick, so they don't learn anything, so they all ran some different equipment and learned how to do stuff, so it was pretty good training. And I did have Todd come over and help with, uh, we don't have a real good packer, so what we did, we put the dirt down, and then we put a foot of gravel on top so the trucks wouldn't sink out of sight, so he, he packed it for us, had like a big roller packer, you put on there, so we probably won't get expense for that.
Okay, but you got the people back on water, so that's the main thing. So, all right, any other questions of? We just really appreciate you and, and Trevor and Gary because, yeah, you guys have been hustling hard on lots of different areas, so.
You all happen to be in town, huh?
You want to call them, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to call. I was supposed to go shoot trap. I made a deal with Trevor, he was gonna watch it all, I went and shot trap, so that's, yeah, that's all right.
Okay, uh, for Mayor's Report, uh, we did host the Western Dakota Tech Regional Leaders Meeting this morning. By we, I mean Wal Economic Development hosted that. Uh, the President of Western Dakota Tech was here, as well as the Foundation Director, and they presented, um, the missions and the visions of Western Dakota Tech. Uh, there was actually twenty-eight people from Wal and Phillip that attended this. Uh, represented was school board members, uh, school administration, city council, uh, the Chamber, Economic Development, Business Leaders. We just had a marvelous turnout. They were talking about workforce development, and Rick, you were there. What were, what were your thoughts about that?
Hi, it was a wonderful meeting. When I started my career after STU, I was a high school guidance counselor in Iroquois, South Dakota. I've always been very, and for four years, I've been always very fascinated by, uh, where young people are going, planning their, their careers and stuff, and I've always been a big proponent for technical education. Just seems like you get a lot of bang for the dollar, uh, because you'd have, when, when I was, uh, and this is early seventies, when kids were going to schools, more four-year kid, four-year, going to four-year colleges, but a lot of times, kids would go for a year, and you're just taking general courses, and, and they just go, this doesn't make any sense, and then go to a technical school and, and get something, uh, that's, that's gonna get them out in the world of work at, at much better pay, so. I've always been fascinated with career path. I was interested, uh, to learn, but the Wal High School had, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, ten going in a technical education, uh, at, uh, at various schools, and five going to a regular college, and I thought, that's awesome. Anyway, that was a great meeting.
And seven of those ten are going on Build Dakota Scholarship, which is a hundred percent paid. So, yes, it was a marvelous meeting. Dan, what were your thoughts?
Yeah, it was very interesting, and like, you know, Oregon College isn't for everybody, and, and, um, Western Dakota is just really expanding their programs, and, and I mean, they're, got their nursing in Phillip and Kadoka, you know, people don't have to drive to Rapid or get an apartment and things like that. Some of the other programs are working towards doing that with them, you know, it's, a lot of things are doing that, they're very exciting.
Dan, what was their, their average starting wage? Wasn't it twenty-three?
Twenty-three eighty-two or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Amazing, and that was right out of, out of school.
How many students did they have?
Oh, I forget how many.
I, 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 they have about a thousand, and then sometimes it's up to twelve hundred. They could easily handle double that, and they did a study where, where really, uh, for their area, they should be running at about four thousand. Of course, they need some expansion.
But anyway, they said their housing is the biggest holdback for that, I don't.
And, and by state law, they can't own housing.
The, the school itself can, so they're working through foundation to get that done. So that will be an addition there, and I think with our.
Did they say anything about, like, meet classes are going, meet training?
Uh, they didn't talk about that today. They didn't. I think, uh, something that was, um, very prominently expressed is a desire with the new Career Technical Edition that we have here, to build a relationship like Phillip did with the nursing program. What is it that we could bring here and develop through Western Dakota Tech, um, utilizing the new facilities? So I see a great, a bright future between Wal Schools and.
I was interested to hear that they have plumbing.
As a program.
It is a program, yeah.
One year program.
Fantastic, one year. And, and do plumbers apprentice?
I think so.
Be your worst nightmare, Rick, if we don't have plumbers in this world.
Oh, I, I, I totally understand that.
Brody's been taking classes through Western Dakota for when he gets done with school.
Bill's credit, right?
And he's, he actually talked about doing the Build Dakota, and they suggested that they, that he calls the school, like, right now, because if he waits, it could be full, and he might not be able to go to that, you know, that school, he might have to wait another year, so. It's crazy how it's filling up, and, yeah.
Uh, I know that, uh, well, Build Dakota Scholarship, the program director is Denny Martin, and she is using Wal as an example because there's, what, twenty-three, uh, seniors? And ten of them are going to, uh, technical schools, and, um, a large number of those have Build Dakota Scholarship, so, um, we're kind of a model for the rest of the state, actually, so. Um, yeah, it's going very, very well. Okay, I also met with Sergeant Swanson and, uh, two of her, uh, deputies, and they were just wanted to visit and see if we had any concerns here in Wal or any needs or anything that, um, they thought, that we thought should be addressed, and they were just trying to make sure that communication is going two ways. So if any of you have noticed anything or, um, would want me to pass that forward, be sure to mention that to me, and uh, they want to come down on a regular basis, and if you folks would like to join me the next time, I didn't really know what this was about when they called and asked, but, uh, if anyone would like to join me, I will let you know that they, that I have a meeting set up with them, and you can certainly, um, visit with them also. And, um, then also on Thursday, uh, Economic Development is bringing in a consultant that's being provided by Black Hills Energy, and Dawn, if you're here, would you like to just speak to that a little bit in terms of, um, what that consultant will be working with Economic Development about?
Yeah, sure. Uh, the company Quest Site Selection Communities Study is the organization that will be coming in. I've been doing some work back and forth, emailing them, coming up with an agenda, and what it entails is that they will, we're going to do a, they call it a, um, a virtual tour, so we're Google Maps virtual tour at the very beginning of the meeting, and they will go over, um, the right way, the best way to respond to RFI's request for information from, for businesses that are looking to possibly move to our area, and what is the best way to market our area and our industrial park, how to do a good business visit. And it's kind of somewhat of a mock thing, actually, and, and this is the part that I didn't realize until later, but we're supposed to be kind of showing them our town, basically, like we would a business that is coming in, and it'll tell us what we're doing wrong, what we're doing right, and so it should be very beneficial for us going forward and in marketing the industrial park, so we're really excited. All the board, uh, is invited to come and attend and sit down with these people, and we'll see what we get out of it, I guess.
Okay, fantastic. And then another item I had was, um, the senior mailboxes. Uh, this is something that Marty Heather and Shannon McGriff started, and the idea is to open the door so kids go spread their, their wings, but then when they want to raise a family and start a business or, um, relocate, this has always come home. So what do you need for the mailboxes? I think you're putting those together here next week.
Yep, next week, we're putting names on all the mailboxes, so each student gets a name. It was, the box sits at the table at the school setup, and we encourage all the community businesses, if they would be interested in putting a little note, putting a little something in each mailbox to encourage the students to come back to Wal, and it, it has happened in the past where, um, previous student has come back and they have put up that exact mailbox that was given to them as a senior, so it's a, a really neat program. Then I'm glad we were able to, to do that for several years.
You know, something, I don't know why this flew in my mind right now, but I wonder about some of our churches, if they would like, if they have those kids in their youth program, would like to send them a note that said, yeah, come, come home. Okay, so, thank you, so, and you would probably need that if anyone wanted to participate by Monday, is it? The thirteenth?
I won't be taking the stuff to the school till Friday morning, so they can, anything can be dropped off at the, probably the Chamber Office or Economic Development or the, to be honest, for that matter, I guess, and we can get them put in there before the mailboxes get taken out.
Yeah, fantastic. And then the last thing, I just want to remind everyone of the fly-in that is this Saturday, and it's from seven to ten. Uh, it's, we're very excited about it. It's a grand reopening of our airport, and there's gonna be a pancake and sausage breakfast, and it's served by the ambulance and the fire department, and a free will donation is welcome, and we'll also be serving Wal Drug Donuts that day. Uh, we are providing a shuttle bus, uh, for the people that fly in. Uh, one of the committee members is adamant that we are likely to have sixty to seventy pilots fly in for this, um, on Saturday, and so, um, And so, um, because of the construction, we're gonna provide shuttle buses to Main Street, so they can enjoy our community. While they're here, uh, also on display, so this would interest like school kids or, uh, parents also. But the, an ambulance will be on display, a fire truck, a spray plane. And then Black Hills Life Flight is gonna be attending, so there's lots of things for everyone. And if it should be an icky day, which it's not going to be, it's gonna be a beautiful day Saturday, like we did last, um, Saturday. But if it should turn against us, we're still gonna do the breakfast. Uh, anyway, just so our locals can come and see what, uh, is going on in our new pair, uh, uh, airport and learn, uh, the value of that airport. The difference it's gonna make for us as we move forward with that. So, grand opening, seven to ten on Saturday morning, so.
It seems like you've got a lot going on for three hours.
Well, I've been guided by pilots, so they seem to know what they're doing, that's also it. So, okay, that concludes my, uh, report for this eve- evening. Um, items for discussion and no action would be taken. And is this a good time then to visit about that item that you, that nobody can open, or?
Um, I can. I, we had just received, I'd just like to keep the guys updated, that, um, we had received a complaint on dogs running, and so I will be, um, sending a letter out. And, um, that is something we also need to make changes in our ordinance on, because it's not allowed to post that letter if the law enforcement can't get it delivered to somebody if they're not ever home. And so that's a change that we wanna make. So we'll see what I can get done, I'll get the first letter sent and go from there to see if we can.
Okay, all right. And then another.
I will resend it out to you guys tomorrow.
At a different point?
Scan it, I just thought this might work, so, one step, but evidently not.
And then one other item, um, that was brought to my attention. And that, I think it's been brought on by this extensive winds we've had lately. And maybe some, a lot of tornadoes in the area. But does sheer addition have, uh, a ability to hear a siren?
Yep, there's a siren.
Sheer addition? Sheer?
Sheer addition.
Kelly addition does.
Right, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I don't know, I've never been out there to.
See if they can hear it or not? So how do those sirens, who places those?
Who sets them up, or who's like?
Who set them up? Wa- was it emergency management or decision?
Management, they, they control them.
Okay, and who is they? Who is emergency?
Dustin Willard, that Alexa.
White. So Dustin, so they determine where the sirens should be in our community, you think? And so if we had a huge concern, we would visit with them and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, probably wouldn't hurt to, maybe look into it and see.
It seems like there's been an awful lot of them and some got to Newell, I guess, last night, so.
Can I hear the local bell?
Yeah, they should be able to.
Yeah, right back corner.
It's right, I'm not sure that.
Corner as you go into.
By that little station, yeah. And there's been times when the one here and the one over, um, on Dorothy Street weren't working and the one south of town, and I could hear it in, because they do it once a month, they set it off on a Saturday at noon.
So, okay.
Mayor, I have a few quick things.
Okay, oh.
Sorry. Um, so sidewalks were brought up last meeting and they were brought up again, uh, this meeting, so I thought I would, um, bring it up while things are still fresh. I feel with the Glen Street sidewalk concern last meeting, the city needs to do the right thing and not endanger our citizens or traveling visitors by making them go in, out into oncoming traffic. We shouldn't waste taxpayers' money on paying man-hours to put a Band-Aid on something that needs to be fixed permanently. We need to put a sidewalk there as soon as possible. This is a very high travel area with it being known that vehicles go over the speed limit on that stretch. Furthermore, we need to put sidewalks in all city sidewalk easements. It has gone on too long for, with the city allowing residents to take out their sidewalk to have a bigger yard or so they don't have to do snow removal or do upkeep. We need to make the sidewalks more accessible for the people in our community and our visitors that would use those sidewalks, so they don't have to go out onto the street. I feel this has been overlooked by the city for too long and we need to work on making it right. That is why I would like the city to look at putting sidewalks where there are none. We can first start by looking at the sidewalk study the city had done that has high priority and low priority areas. I know we can't do all this project within a short amount of time, but I would like it to be on the other council members' minds. Also, we could look at, see, to see if there are state or federal grants for this type of project to help out with our cost. The safety of our people and visitors should be one of our top priorities, so having a safe and complete sidewalk is a great way to show that we care for their safety. That was one of them, and then I have a couple more. My other one is Glen Street speeding. And talks with the people, my warning Glen Street speeding is an issue and it has been for years. Some solutions that come out of these talks were, uh, have a talk with the DOT about adjusting the speed limit on Highway two forty where the, where it's still city limits. Currently, the speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour from the service road to the south of the cabins. Then changes to forty-five miles per hour to pass the golf course road. Then fifty-five miles per hour from Golf Course Road to Batman's Drive. I suggest we look at talking with the DOT to see if we can move that twenty mile per hour sign to go between Method Drive and Cemetery, uh, the Cemetery Turnoff, so it slows people down before they go under the one-ten bridge. From there to Lariat Drive, make it thirty-five miles per hour. Then from Lariat Drive to Batman's Drive, make it forty-five miles per hour. If the DOT is unable to work with us, then another route to look at is putting imprinted rumble strips into the pavement right at South Boulevard and Glen Street intersection. So when the driver hits the rumble strips, there's a twenty mile per hour sign right there. Also, I would like to thank Deputy Christopherson for patrolling the four-way stop when Wake and Bacon had its ribbing cutting ceremony. He pulled over three vehicles in a short amount of time. The four-way stop has also been an ongoing issue and as I appreciate the patrolling, that is not the solution to the problem. A way we could work towards solving that problem is putting proper signage and locations as follows. Glen Street and South Boulevard's intersection, put a blinking pedestrian crossing sign with the family figures on them or a single figure. Then at Glen Street and South Avenue intersection, where there's a crosswalk, have a regular pedestrian crossing sign. And also either by six-twelve or six-ten Glen Street, erect a new sign that says Stop Sign Ahead. Could we also look into putting a blinking red light that blinks on all four sides? That could be put overhead in the middle of the four-way stop intersection, high enough so semi-trucks won't hit it. All the crosswalks need painting, but I know with the recent weather and wind and rain, it is unable to get done, but it should be on the radar if it isn't already.
We try to have it done before Memorial Day, just so you know.
Yeah, and I, I agree with the, you guys just having the time is just changing seasons, so.
Yep, it's usually too cold early in the morning, but, I mean, that's ours.
Yeah, and just like, with those crosswalks too, I mean, even driving, yeah, they're painted, but still some kind of sign that should be right by that sidewalk showing that there is a sidewalk right there. And especially like coming off of, um, Highway two forty, coming right into town, there's that crosswalk right there at Glen Street and South Boulevard intersection. And people are whizzing down there and there's, like, if there's a blinking pedestrian sign or something, maybe they'll pay a little bit more attention. I know we have a blinking speed limit sign that they don't really pay attention to, but.
We have two blinking speed limit signs and a giant stop sign that flashes and they still don't see it, but.
Yeah.
I don't know what the station is, but.
Yeah.
Big ass big one, boom. Big.
Uh, another one is about city-owned lot. Uh, the city owns a free parking lot that is west of the powerhouse that should be used as a recreational area for the public to use. That is a big area that could be better used for our community, like putting a pool court outside basketball court, uh, wiffle ball field, tennis pickleball court, or whatever else the community would like to see go there. And just like within talks tonight, you know, they're, um, saying that they're gonna be hauling over on First Avenue right next to our park, and Mary brought up that concern with the parking pool right there. I mean, maybe it's something that, I mean, not right away, but maybe we need to look at relocating our park. If that's gonna be a more industrial zone over there.
One, one thing about relocating the Parks Act is that city park land has a covenants on it that it can never be used for anything but the city parks or it will revert back to the family that donated.
Okay.
I just became aware of that recently and it was the.
What families in? Jensen's, Blom, put that in.
Was it, was it the Mueller? Um, I mean.
It's not Blom, it's Jensen's, yeah.
Okay.
One last topic, Mary, remember.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, city ordinances, and Carolyn's been talking about the city ordinances here that some need to be looked at. Um, I would like to ask my fellow council members to go through all of our current ordinances. Some of these ordinances are outdated or need to be revised to fit the present and upcoming future. I would ask for each council member to go through and make edits or suggestions in ordinances that they deem fit. For example, you are not allowed to throw on candy and parade, that's in one of our ordinances. Um, I know that, that this is a lengthy process that will have to get the attorney involved, but I feel it will be well worth the time and money spent on updating the ordinances. Thank you and I look forward to our next meetings.
Okay, and to address that then, uh, you are, we are working in that direction?
Yeah, and the people that we actually have, um, have an agreement with, they have attorneys on staff, and so that's part of our fee is that they look at that after we, and so that's included in.
So with that, I'm going to invite you to be a part of that group that is gonna be working on that as soon as we complete the planning and zoning, which we are very close to getting that. Uh, we meet again next week. Uh, and that might be close to our last meeting there. Then, once we've got that, cause we've grabbed some of those ordinances from other places and put them in this one. So we couldn't be fixing those until we got this one right. And so when we get the zoning one done, then we're gonna attack that, we're actually behind our schedule. So, thank you for joining the council and being, um, agreeable and helping us out, because that's gonna be a lot of reading. So, thank you, Zach, good points, very good points. Okay, uh, is there anything, any other items that need to, uh, be brought before the council? Our next city council meeting will be May twenty-first, which is also not, um, it's a Tuesday, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's at six-thirty, uh, we made that change to adjust for some of that, um, when Carolyn was gone, so that's how we, how come we've changed.
And Mayor, I'll need to attend on some over that one, because I'll be out of town for training for my job.
Okay, all right.
I'll be late, we could have had Kim and Darn graduation at six.
You are so lucky, I am glad you're back for that. So.
Hopefully it'll be done by seven.
I'm surprised they have them at night, I thought the.
Well, I think that's what my wife told me.
Okay, well, I'm sure she's right.
Put it on my calendar.
Yeah, she's got it, I'm sure. Okay, so that moves us now, we do need to have executive session, Rick.
I'm gonna make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss legal personnel issues according to S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two. One. What do you call that? Those two, like, curvy things.
Parenthesis.
One in a parenthesis.
And we also need to add three to that, too.
One and three, very good.
So thank you folks for coming tonight, joining us. Oh, yeah, it's been moved to second executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Now, to declare us out of executive, uh, session, do we have a motion?
I would make a motion that we hire Danny Herring as the new Executive Director for Economic Developments at a wage of twenty-four fifty an hour.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to hire Danny Herring. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other business that needs to come before the council? Meeting adjourned.